Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Middletown Public School Committee meeting to order on Thursday, July 6th, 2023. All members are present, oh, at 4:30 PM, all members are present, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I want to thank you all for making this meeting. I have been working closely with the town, town finance and town administrator, and they are working diligently to see if we can, the town can exceed the cap. And they, you know, wanted our numbers to be totally in line rather than wait till after the budget is adopted. So Mr. Brown and Mr. Tanguay and Lori Miller and myself have been working to go through this budget and to demonstrate to the to the state that there is a need to exceed the cap based on loss of revenues, both on the town side and the school side. So there are five documents, we put them in order that I'm going to talk, walk you through these. And we can, we can start, I think. So the first page is called, or first document is FY23 Special Revenues Budget Adjustments. So we work through these budget adjustments. And most of these grants, as you can see, are federal grants. Some are the local grants, Van Buren Charitable, and there have been increases in the budget, so that's why we needed to make the budget adjustment. So oh, well, this is the first page, the adjustments increased the special revenue funds in the amount of $376,378,923, to be exact. And it's primarily what's called the consolidated resource grants that we received from RIDE and the federal funds. So you can go down the line here and see that the IDEA A, B is the allocation. The next is the preschool, that's special education, and there were some adjustments in those grants. And you can see the dollars, the revised budget. There was a Title I adjustment, Part A, an adjustment there, a Title II A adjustment. The next is the, I need, I need my glasses for this, the Title Perkins Vocational. That's the Korea Tech, that stayed the same, the one before that, there's one Perkins that did increase. Then all the way down to the bottom, the Van Buren Charitable Foundation, there was an increase in that, and that was a competitive grant that we did apply for. And on the next page, pretty much is all the same, which demonstrates just the increase of $378,000 to make our budget adjustment for special revenues, all grants, a total of $5,246,246. So I'll just let you digest that, we were working on these numbers as, even as of today, to get them situated. So that's why you didn't get this document ahead of time, any of the documents ahead of time. But take your time to digest that, and I'm here to answer any questions. Again, this is the FY23, the year we just closed out, and these are all grants adjustments. And I'll talk while you're looking that over. It was important for us to get these adjustments and have the school committee approve. So when we go to exceed the cap, to, you know, demonstrate where we are this year and how next year there's going to be a loss of revenue for the special, the grants. Because remember, we had the ESAT grants, we have those positions in there, and those positions will no longer be funded.
I'm good, does anyone have any questions?
I, only on the food services, it looks like it's going to stay the same, is that correct?
The food service, yes, there were no adjustments in the food service.
The only reason I've been asking Newport Portsmouth, some people are having problems with food services, so we're escaping it, at least for this year.
Well, we escaped it in 23, there is a contract that I'm going to bring to your, for approval at our next meeting. And we might need to consider increasing the lunch prices to break even.
How much of a problem are we having on collection food services?
I don't have that data in front of me, but yeah.
If someday you happen to think of it.
Right now, we're in the black for our food service. And any food service surplus goes into a special fund that you can only use for food service types of things. Equipment, if we need a new refrigerator for a kitchen, actually, we need a new van. Ocean State has been very nice to give us a van to get the, transport the food, but at no cost. But we do need to buy one, and we do have a significant amount of money in there that we will probably come to you with a request for, for the hot lunch to purchase a bus or a van.
Okay, just hopefully make one more.
That's okay, that's all we're here for.
In other words, on all the grants that we've been operating on, we're now running about $5 million shot.
No, we're actually 378, it was an increase of 378, and those are larger, largely the CRP dollars, the consolidated resource. There were increases, okay, in the IDEA, which is special ed, there were increases in Title I. There were increases in Title II, in Title III.
See, everything's in parentheses, so I guess.
That's a question.
Yeah, I had to process that, too.
I know.
Even though it's in parentheses, those were.
Nearly $400,000. Which is, to me, great.
It is great, but then you don't have that the following year, which is going to be our problem. Okay, okay, so the second document then, the title is FY24 Budget Adjustments. Now, this is a budget you had voted on in March, and we're making adjustments here. Again, we know some better numbers as a result of the governor's and the general assembly's vote on the budget. So these are the adjustments we, we wanted to make, and these we usually make after our town council sets the appropriations. But again, talking to our town administrator and finance director, they asked that we have this meeting to make the adjustments now, so when they deliver the documents to the state to see if we can exceed the cap, they wanted clear, clearer numbers. So so this is the 24 budget adjustments. And I just want to go, the first one is the local appropriations was increased by $530,000. All the adjustments after that are reductions. So there's a librarian that we reduce, Medicare that we reduce, the pension, survival, disability, these were all reductions. If you remember, we had budgeted, if you go down to line 18, we had budgeted about half a million dollars in state aid. So this, this is the state aid that we did not get, so the town asked us to eliminate that now. And these are, these other reductions are reductions we took from the budget. Now you'll say, oh, look at, did you cut interpreters? We cut money from the interpreter's line, but we didn't cut interpreters. The librarian, however, is reduced, but in talking to the town administrator, there's hope that the town will support those priority one and priority two, that that position would come back. You know, these others are little cuts that we were able to make.
So you're saying, excuse me, line 18, we were not including that 744,000?
We had to make that a budget adjustment.
Okay. Because we're not getting it.
We're not getting it. You know, and again, this is information that the town can then use for the state. Look at the school department had anticipated more, we were told more, but that hasn't come through, so. So those, that's all the adjustments for FY24. The budget that you approved in March, but the town hasn't approved yet. But they're better numbers.
Can I ask, remember, we were those who got X amount of dollars from the state, and they kind of wiped us out.
They did.
And I think they wiped out Portsmouth less than us, and Newport a little bit less, that's the money that because we're rich here in Middletown, that the state decided that we don't need.
That's that 744.
744.
Yeah.
Because they feel that the towns can have the capacity to pay.
Their formula, yeah.
In the funding fund.
So all the adjustments after that 530 are reduced expenditure counts. I say that it won't adversely affect any Middletown programs and students, the librarian certainly would. But as I said, my understanding is that the library should be funded through additional funds that the town is seeking from the state by requesting permission to exceed the cap.
And that's the only one that.
That's the only one.
To a person.
Right, right. The, the reduction of transportation, line 24, that is special education, the bus that used to go to Tiverton. So we were, were able to reduce that.
What's the total reductions?
Oh, boy. I think it's, let me see, I don't know, I didn't have that up.
I'll do it real quick, while you keep talking.
Okay. Wait, there's in and out money here, though, too, so.
What's the, the out is the line 18?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So add them all up and subtract the 744.
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
I should have had that for you, I apologize.
I thought you said the town appropriation was a plus.
Is a plus, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the only one that's a plus.
Right. It's the only one that's basically a credit, yeah. Okay, if you move to the next page, then I'd like to take this document and the document behind it together, because this actually shows the FY24 General Operating Budget and the FY, and that you recommended, and shows the adjustments that we just went over in here. Okay. So the adjustments that we went over in the page above, the document before are now reflected in here.
Right. Let's go back to those numbers that I just added up, so it's 214,119 with all of the ones from the librarian down.
The cuts.
Those are the cuts. Add the 744 to that as a minus, is that right?
Well, no, because that's a reduction, so.
But from here down to the bottom
Yep.
is a re, are reductions.
Are reductions.
So that was 214,119, and then add the 530?
Add this, the seven.
The 744.
744, nope, 543. That total
Yeah, it's close to a million.
Is 958662. And that's a negative.
That, we reduced the budget by that.
And then add
Back in.
Back in the 530 424. Oops.
Nope.
I didn't do that right. Plus 530424. Yeah, no, that's not right. 958662 minus 530. Okay, I'm all mixed up here.
No, you're right.
424. So we're in, we're still in the negative, in the red, 428238. Is that right?
Yep.
Is I, did I do that right?
Yes. I think the next two pages, you'll see, the next two documents, you'll kind of see that. As I said, the first document, the one that's just a single page, are all the adjustments that were on that page where you were tallying. Now, in here, so it shows you know, shows an increase of 500,000 that the town put in. It shows a decrease later on where we took out the 744,000. A reduction there, so the increase over the FY23 budget is 1,383,037.
That's what we need to add to our budget.
That's what we're, what we're asking. Again, these are cleaner numbers so that the town can go upstate and say, school committee approved these, they readjusted their budget based on the numbers we know, based on the increase in or the decreases, and this is what we're doing. So the next page document, I called it Document Four, is that total budget revised with everything now that we've done. So the budget you submitted on March 16th was a little bit different than this budget, because we put the adjustments in here now. Okay.
This is easier to read with the red.
Yeah, it is.
Too many parentheses with the pluses, that didn't.
Usually, so the, the red numbers are, show that they're lower than last year. And again, based on trends, we did that. So those are the, the reductions we made to get to the, the final budget, which, you know, you go to the end is 41,311,940, and this is everything, okay?
And that's that 1383 again.
The ones that are, again, it's, it's the adjustments that we made. The red means we reduced that already, lower than last year, even though like you know, the, the hundred dollars, we, we reduced it, the dental.
What percentage does that come to about, if you combine them? Like over the 4%, do you know what I mean?
I don't know, just. Yeah, well, we had to come in within 4%.
That's with the four, and then
Yeah.
Here's to what that.
Right.
How did we reduce 2.5 million in other purchased professional educational services?
Oh, where are you?
Line 64, page two.
So we took a look, we looked at our spending going across, and we needed to reduce, and we reduced what we could there.
2.5 million?
Yeah.
Is that going to come back to, that we're going to need it?
We'll have to see. We, we figured that this was, we figured that, you know, this is what we needed to do, this is a line that can be.
What are some of those services? For example, it's not supply services.
Not supplies, no, no.
It's not special ed.
Not special ed, no, I don't have that list, I'm sorry. But you can see interpreters on page 56, you know, that we didn't eliminate interpreters. We just reduced that line item.
Excuse me, Teresa, the question you were asking about was, you, you were comparing the FY23. The original FY23 was 7.5 million. And we dropped that what like by 500K and then.
Where are you talking about? So, yeah, let, let me, let me go and look at this.
Line 52917.
Yeah.
So with the question you asked, was, is this going to come back to haunt us? Does it look like we dropped 500K? We're, we're running about FY23 and 24, we're running 15 million point six. A million difference. I'm.
1.383, 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million difference. So we, I'm going back to that other, that 2 million. We spent 2.8 million in other purchase services in 2023? Because those are encumbered. We only approved 423693.
Increase. Okay, that's the difference.
We increased 423.
Yeah, and then here is the red is what we're, oh, yeah, the, the red is actually lower than last year.
All right, call me stupid, but I'm not.
Yeah, so you're still budgeting 2,529,000, it's just that it's less than the previous year.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I thought it was.
Yeah, we're not going to go from $3 million in '21 or '22 and now '23.
The red throws you away.
Okay.
400,000.
So, so the actual budget is going to be 2.5 million. Okay, I thought that was.
We're reducing it from the year before.
Thank you.
All right.
That's.
Thank you.
Because I was trying to figure out, wait.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right.
Yeah.
I understand now.
Right.
Got it.
So it just means that we've.
We've cut the line items, we've brought it down to that number.
But the actual amount is in the red.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not how much the reduction is.
Right, right. That's, I'm a little slow, sorry.
Gotcha.
What happened, you go strawberry picking in the heat? All right, I understand.
So, you know, this is our revised budget then.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last item is, I, I have a document five, this is the FY24 Special Revenue. Are updated to reflect the information we know at this time. So, you know, it's those grants. Again, town administrator and finance wanted us to be more specific to show exactly the revenues with any numbers we, we knew better at this time.
So we're looking at 3.6 million in special avenues.
Yes.
That we will receive and that we have budgeted to, to expend.
Yes.
Okay. And those are.
So the total new revenues is 3,686, yes.
Right, and that's, we, we will receive that money.
Yes.
That's committed.
That's committed, it could get better.
Okay.
So there were no adjustments in our capital funds? And the, all the new our new budget is really 46,720,494. So my recommendation would be to approve.
Wait, one second, please, what's the 46?
Okay, so I recommend the approval of the FY24 All Funds Budget, which is that number, the 46, and those adjustments we, that I went through for FY23.
Special revenues. We need two separate motions.
You can do two, do two separations.
Okay. Just to be clear.
Yeah, but I want to make sure, everyone understand this?
Is the, the March 16th, 2023, is that date going to change?
That was where, when you approved the initial budget, so now we'll have the revised budget. This one, we'll, we'll, we'll say revised, okay?
June.
Right, July.
July.
Yeah. So it's.
Ready to make that?
Yeah.
So we need a motion to, to approve the 20, revised, revised 2023.
For budget?
Oh, no, but no, we have to do the 23 first. All right. Yeah. So you're going to do this one first, revised all fund budget.
Make a motion to approve the revised all funds budget and the 20 for the FY23 Special Revenue Funds Revenue Budget?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Now I'll do a motion for FY24.
Same thing.
Yep.
The.
And then put the number in there.
For that amount, yeah. Make a motion to approve the all, to the all funds budget for FY24, which is 46,720,494.95.
Second.
Do we want to, um, all in favor? Aye. We didn't put in there about the June date, but it doesn't matter, it just says new, it's all new, okay? So it's all new, yeah, okay, all right. All right. Well, I have to tell you, this is really clear. Once Wendy clarified it, thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
We shouldn't color coded, or.
No, no, it was.
Because what you read, you think you're, you know, in the hole, so.
No, it was, it was good, I mean, I think this is really good to be able to see this as a high level with all the line items specifically identified and where we're at. So I, I really am happy that the town is willing to work with us.
Town has been extremely cooperative.
Great.
Trying, you know, looking, we've been working with the town administrator on a daily basis, trying to look at all those priority one and priority two positions. You know, if, if there's permission to exceed the cap, that would certainly bring back the programs. The, you know, the problem is, we're not going to know our budget till the 28th, and then it's recalling those teachers and, and establishing the programs and moving forward from there.
So basically, we're presenting this to them now.
Yes.
They're going to try to go to the state and get approval.
Right.
And then they'll vote on it
Right.
in the end of July.
It was important
Yeah.
that you, this is why we have this meeting, to have the approval of the adjustments. And we threw in the FY23 because that was needed to. So, as I said, typically, we don't make these adjustments until the budget is set, but going up to the state, the data needs to be clear.
So the new budget dates, budget hearing dates is Monday, July 26th. The second one is Wednesday, July 28th, and that's when they will approve. That's when they'll vote on the budget, I should say.
And at 6 o'clock, I believe, if I hear anything different, let you know.
And I believe it's still at town hall at this point.
Right, okay.
I know sometimes they've had it a good day, but.
Yeah. I'd also like to make a suggestion in terms of our meetings. We do have a scheduled meeting for the 20th. We won't know our budget by then. We do have a few items, but nothing that can't wait to a following meeting. I just don't want to have a meeting for a meeting's sake, I'd rather have a meeting that's full. So I would like to propose a meeting for August 10th. We'll know out at Thursday, which is a Thursday. We will know our budget then, we, I'll be able to tell you who's recalled, who's still out there, all of the transfers will be done by then. Change of position, and then another meeting, and it probably will be a short one, on the 29th. Change of position, and then another meeting, and it probably will be a short one on the twenty-ninth of August. And what I do then, typically, we give you an enrollment update. Class size update. Any grants or whatever that we get, so.
So if everybody can look into your crystal balls and see if we could do an August third?
Tenth.
August tenth.
August tenth, sorry.
I'm not here.
August twenty-ninth.
And that would be a Tuesday, so it's not a typical day that we usually have, but yes.
August twenty.
So do we wanna look at another date for the tenth?
I mean, if you.
When are you, are you gone that whole week?
I'm gone from the eighth to the fourteenth, yeah. Wedding in California.
Oh.
Well, actually, I'm not going to the wedding, I'm just watching the grandkids.
That's even more fun. What do you wanna do, do we need Wendy here?
It's up, it's up to you.
You guys, if you have a quorum, I mean, I don't know that you wanna.
You're okay with that? Just try not to put them too close together if we don't have to, but I don't want them.
No.
You can miss, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so then on this plan on, on Thursday, everybody else can make it?
Yes.
Thursday, August, August tenth at four thirty here. And then. Tuesday, August twenty-ninth. Here.
Yes.
Okay.
Au- August twenty-ninth at.
Four thirty.
We'll, we'll send an email.
And that's a Tuesday, so it's not a Thursday, it's different. I can't do the thirty-first, so.
So when I get back, I'll just follow up with you, Rosemary, if you want.
Right, we'll have, we'll put everything in your packet.
Yeah.
And you can call it up on, you know, if you have.
Yeah.
Your own iPad or, or computer, you'll see all the information.
We're meeting twenty, trivia question, what day is the first day of school?
You're gonna challenge me? The fifth.
We're waiting until after Labor Day.
No, the, yes, yes, the fifth is, the fifth is teachers back, the sixth is students, yes.
Yeah, okay. And once again, when was that?
They're both at four thirty.
Budget. Again, July.
July twenty-sixth is a Monday.
Yeah.
At six o'clock at town hall. And Wednesday, July twenty-eighth. At six o'clock.
No, you have wrong numbers, wrong. July twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, sorry, sorry.
Twenty-four, Monday.
I should be looking at the calendar, I should know better.
July twenty-fourth, which is a Monday.
At town hall at six o'clock. And Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. At town hall at six o'clock.
So what's the difference in the two meetings, the twenty-fourth is the presentation of the budget again?
Usually it's a, it's a public hearing, so, two public hearings.
They have to, by state, state.
By check.
When is the first budget, uh, public?
The twenty-fourth.
Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Is the first public hearing.
I thought it was about the.
They moved it.
They moved it.
Yep, they moved, they've moved it several times.
Thank you.
So this is, this is the new dates now, cause I had to cross it out of my other.
Yeah, I saw it, Sean sent it to me, but I didn't.
So we're good with everybody?
And then we are on a budget freeze, as you know, we can only, I think you all received that, we can only expand what we did this time last year. Except for grants that we know, and, you know, we've discussed with our town finance. Some of the renewals that we needed to make, like our student information. System, trying to think of what else, David, it was pretty much that.
Just our critical educational software, so student information system, progress monitoring system. Our educational testing software, standardized testing software, Ventum for our beyond the bell programs, so they can begin to utilize that, but just the pure essentials.
And that's just until the budget's approved.
Right, right.
Right, but everything goes through Rosemary, then through me, and then through Mark, and. If Mark has questions, it bounces back to T, I mean, it's a really great system, how it's set up right now, so that we cannot go beyond. And, and grants are all incorporated there, I mean, it's really, the, the system's working very well right now to have that second center license.
It's a good check and balance.
It is.
I mean, one thing, I debriefed with Poe this week, and we don't have enough wax. To complete our cleaning, and you know, obviously, we clean in, in. The summer, get, get the buildings done, so I am gonna talk to our finance director to see if we can purchase some wax. And get that done, so it doesn't hold up the work in our schools. It's, you know, not a really big ticket item, but. That should, we should be able to do that.
Do the work in stages, so.
Yeah.
But it's a necessity. Doesn't get done, the next one doesn't get started.
Right, yeah.
And have they made any further decisions on that, combining the two departments?
Nothing yet, we probably, we, we need to have a meeting with them, the school committee and the town council, or the leadership of both. Entities. And talk about that, we did advertise for an, a business manager, we're not, there's no bites for a business manager, so. People are not out there wanting jobs. But I will keep you updated with the hiring and so forth through my status reports or my weekly updates to you. So I know we're not meeting for a long time and things are happening, but I, I wanna always keep you in the loop and, and, yeah. And I know Mr. Yu had asked for items to be on the agenda, the. Self-help policy and. Something else.
Wait, no, no.
Uh, uh, I'll check in, we'll either have that in the August meeting or the later August meeting.
Can we get also, just through, because of the prevention coalition, the. The things we approved last time with the policy, yeah.
That will be done, we'll put that on that first August meeting.
Okay.
Cause that will need two, two weeks, yeah.
Dr. Heath was talking about kind of finishing that up, I talked with Lisa about that. And they were asking about that, she said she would check with them, she was meeting with them the next day to see if she could also get copies of that.
Yep.
We'd like to present that to the. Prevention Coalition, as it is a change, big change.
Yep, we'll put that on the first one.
So though you're not gonna be here for that meeting, you'll get the packet.
Yeah.
If you have any questions. Email Rosemarie, that way we have that in that meeting and if you have any questions.
Our new high school principal has settled in nicely. I was over there this morning. And our interim special ed director has started work and. We're, we're moving.
The question, are we still down ninety-two students from last year?
You know, this is a, we usually have five hundred students leave and five hundred come in this time of the year. So our registration office is really busy, it's our military in and out. We're going over to the War College mid-August, right?
Mid-July.
July, so we have a team going over there to help with registration and orientation and the programs that we have, so.
Okay, I'm, on the layoff list, we had sixteen, I think.
We did, and they're still on layoff because I can't recall anyone until the budget is set.
That's what.
And the town was aware of that, we're paying unemployment.
Yep, okay. We have to, oh, and. Your last page here was just an enhancement of. Number one, correct? This is the, this is the Middletown special revenue, recommended revenue.
Right.
It's just an enhancement, it looked like, okay, great.
All right. Well, thank you again for this meeting, it was important that we get together and, yeah, I wanna, you know, as always, cooperate. Operate with the town because they're working hard to get us the dollars.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
No meeting on the twentieth.
No meeting on the twentieth, the next meeting is August tenth.
Then the, the town hall meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll send a list, Kiki will send a list of all the meetings.
Good motion to adjourn the meeting at five oh eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.